A minute for him. Hope he's coming back.
I think he is.
For a couple more months.
Right.
Why don't we get this on the row? I'll read the agenda. So, good evening. Welcome to the May 16th meeting of the Westboro Planning Board. I'll read the agenda. Just a reminder that the meeting is being recorded. We have Silver Hollow Estates Lot Releases, Quick Farm Road Street and Eastman Acceptance Plan, Continuation of the Public Hearing for 165 Flanders, Continuation of Public Hearing and the Possible Decision for Earth Moving Permit 25 Gleason, Continuation of the Public Hearing for 19212 Oak, Continuation of the Public Hearing to Modify 1 Gleason, and Discussion Regarding the Modification of the Town Planner Title. Being past 6:30, I will start with the Lot Releases for Silver Hollow. Jim Robbins, can you just give us a background? I believe the only thing outstanding is a couple of checks, but just update the board.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, as you know, Silver Hollow Estates is a residential subdivision on Mount Pleasant Street. There are 26 approved lots. The applicant has previously had all but the remaining five released, so 21 lots have been released for construction. The applicant is now in front of us to release the remaining five. We have adequate security. As a matter of fact, the applicant has never asked for a reduction in security. So, we have the entire 246,000, 246,000 still in place to secure the completion of roadway and also the project mitigation fee, which has a balance of $77,000 to be paid by the applicant at this time before you release the remaining five lots. And Steve is here representing Silver Hollow Estates LLC.
Steve, any comments? Any questions from the board? I don't have any questions, so if someone wants to make a motion on this?
I move the Planning Board to approve the release. Releases of Lot 15, 16, 17, 18, and 20 at Silver Hollow Estates from the project covenant dated May 2nd, 2023 is modified. The lot releases are to be held by the Planning Board staff until Silver Hollow Estates LLC. The applicant delivers the appropriate mitigation fee as described in the subdivision approval, and the lots' release fees are received by the town.
Second.
Discussion on that motion? I don't know if we need the whole motion since we've already got the checks, but...
At the time I wrote the motion, I didn't have the checks, so...
Good, fair enough.
It's still the same. The motion is...
It's still applicable, though. So, we have a motion, we have a second, and no discussion. So, all those in favor, that's five to zero in favor. Thank you, Steve. We appreciate it.
Good luck.
So, the board will sign the lot releases. Kristin will notarize them, and then you can have them. So, if you want to hang out for a little while, she can probably do that right now if you'll take a couple of minutes.
Sure.
So, Steve can have these.
No.
You'll need it when you apply for building permit, and you need to record these at the registry, because when you sell them, the bank will want to see the release.
Fair enough. I'll just wait over here. Thank you. Kristin, I could just scan it here if you want.
What, you can? Okay.
Who's the other signature on here?
Next item on the agenda is Quick Farm Road Street and Eastman Acceptance Plan. Kristin, are you still taking notes, so we'll wait for you?
Yeah, give Kristin a minute to catch up.
I need her to take minutes, so I don't want to distract her from...
I'm filling a date at the bottom on yours. Okay.
Yeah.
I'll just done that way.
I should have done it to the microphone. They're in commercial. Page two. Page two, too. See if I did that right.
Uh huh.
There's a crowd here tonight.
Yeah, right. 90% of what we have are continuations.
Yeah, it looks fine, but I'll send it to you, so confirm it. All right. You should get that in your email. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Quick Farm Road Street and Eastman Acceptance Plan. Again, I'll turn to Jim for a quick summary.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. As you know, the orchards at Quick Farm is an older subdivision. It was actually approved in the 1990s, 1998, to be exact. It's been under construction since then. The developer, Casa Homes and Development, has had the street brought to town meeting at the last Springtown meeting this year, and the town accepted the road portion we call Section 2. And now I have the acceptance and easement plans to be endorsed by the Planning Board. They will then be endorsed by the Board of Selectmen and recorded at the registry. This is the normal procedure that we do with street acceptance. It's been so long since this board, I think, had a street acceptance. You may have forgotten, but I need you to vote to endorse the acceptance plan shown in your motion. I have the plans here. We don't have to take the time to sign them now. You can sign them after the meeting. There's only two sheets.
Questions from the board? Do you have a motion?
I move the Board to endorse the Street and Eastman Acceptance Plans entitled Acceptance Plan of Roadway and Easements, Quick Farm Road in Westboro, Massachusetts, dated January 7, 2022, and revised August 31, 2022.
I second that motion.
Discussion. All those in favor? Five to zero. Next item, we'll sign those after the meeting if everybody could remember to stay. Next item on the agenda is Continuation of the Public Hearing for 165 Flanders Road Site Plan. We have a letter from Bowler Engineering dated May 12th, addressed to Jim Robbins, Planning Director. Boy, they're getting ahead of us. Regarding 165 Flanders Road, Dear Mr. Robbins, on behalf of EG America, we would like to request a continuance of the Planning Board hearing for the project at 165 Flanders Road until the June 20th Planning Board meeting. If you should have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. And that's signed Andrew Platt, who is a representative from Bowler Engineering, who represents the owner. Any questions on that? Seeing none, is there a motion?
I move that the Planning Board continue the public hearing for the site plan review application for 165 Flanders Road to Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023, at 6:30 p.m., as requested by the applicant.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor? Five to zero in favor. Continuance. Next item on the agenda is Continuation of the Public Hearing for Earth Moving Permit at 25 Gleason Street. I have a letter dated May 9th. Yeah, I'm trying to find that.
I spoke with Mike on the phone today. He's aware of the date. He's fine with that. I thought he was going to give us an updated letter, but he obviously didn't.
Well, he did email us something today. All right. Well, so we're not going to schedule... He had requested May 30th, but obviously we'll continue that to June. So, let me read this into the record first. May 16th, 2023, addressed to the Westboro Planning Board regarding special permit earth moving at the Ward property on Gleason Street. Dear Mr. Robbins, on behalf of Walter Ward, the landowner, and Milford Stone, the operator, collectively the applicants, we request a continuance of the public hearing scheduled for May 16th, 2023. We understand the town engineer requires additional time to review the draft conditions. We look forward to seeing the Planning Board on the 30th, and that sincerely, Michael Scott from Land Design Collaborative, who represents the owner and applicants. Any questions on that? What is our first date in June? June 6?
6.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion on that?
I move that the Planning Board continue the public hearing for the earth-moving special permit application at 25 Gleason Street to Tuesday, June 6, 2023, at 6:30 p.m., as requested by the applicant.
Second.
Discussion on that motion? All those in favor? Five to zero of that continuance. We have another... Actually, on that one, we all got draft findings, so try to review those and get your comments.
I sent you a complete decision.
Oh, that's right. You did send us that, so...
It came in email later this evening.
All right. So, try and review that, obviously, before the 6th and get any comments to Jim. Next item, 19212 continuation, and we'll take that along with 1 Gleason Street continuation. We have a letter dated May 15th, addressed to Jim Robbins. Jim, we hereby request continuance of the Planning Board hearings on Hana Place and Village Commons from Tuesday, May 16th, the next scheduled Planning Board meeting. And that's signed Farouk Ansari, who is the owner and applicant for both projects. Any discussion? Does anyone want to make a motion on that?
Okay. I move the Planning Board continue the public hearing for site plan review application for 190-212 Oak Street and the public hearing to modify special permit T-OV number 2014-1 for Village Commons at 1 Gleason Street until Tuesday, June 6, 2023, at 6:30 p.m., as requested by the applicant.
Any discussion on that motion? Did somebody second that?
Second.
John seconded it. Any discussion? All those in favor? Five to zero. Next item is an A&R Plan for Bridal Lane. Jim, I'll let you describe this. It seems pretty simple.
All right. So, you're looking at a plan of land on Bridal Lane. Here, Bridal Lane is off of Oak Street. It's where the skating rink is, and M Seal is also on Bridal Lane. This plan is from the Arthur Chase Realty Trust. As you know, Mr. Chase passed away last year, and the property is in the trust with his family. There are currently three lots existing. Shown on the plan, you see lots 1 and 2. That's because they're combining lots 1, 2, and 3. Lot 3 would have been in the middle, where you see the 20-foot-wide drain easement. That lot is primarily wet. They're combining that land with Lot 2 to make one large lot. And now, instead of having three lots, you have two lots. It's a very simple plan. They're eliminating the line that's in the middle of Lot 2.
Looks like they're eliminating that small, a small lot on the corner of Bridal Lane and Oak Street, too, right?
So, Lot 1 now encompasses the lot that you just mentioned on the corner. When you come into the subdivision from Oak Street on the right, there's no building, so these lots encompass all the vacant land. There are no buildings on these lots.
We don't determine buildability on these. That's up to the building commissioner.
No, they're combining the two.
I hear that.
All right. Questions for Jim?
So, we're combining three lots into two.
Yeah, and redrawing the lot line.
Yeah, and adding frontage. Will it be a project? We'll see.
I don't know. They haven't told me that they have any plans. They may be just marketing it. I don't, I don't think the Chase Trust is interested in doing development. Mr. Chase himself didn't build. He sold property.
Bridal Lane, a public road?
Yes, it is.
Any further questions? Any want to make a motion on this?
I move that the Planning Board approve... I move that the Planning Board approve and endorse the A&R Plan entitled Plan of Land Bridal Lane, Westboro, Massachusetts, dated April 11th, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor endorsing that plan? Five to zero in favor.
Jim can just sign off on this. We don't need you to sign. You can sign off on this.
The next item is the discussion regarding the modification of the Town Planner title. This basically came out of the search committee. They feel that renaming the Town Planner to Director of Planning would be more attractive to potential candidates and be more descriptive of the job.
Isn't it a little too late?
Not really, because the search committee is still open, as far as that goes, and I...
They're still accepting applications?
Yes. So, this would be, basically, we, as a board, would make a request to the Select Board, and the Select Board has the authority to change that title.
I think we just recommended the Select Board that they changed the title.
So, I just want to push back, because I mentioned the charter, and I just looked up the charter, and it does mention Town Planner. And I don't see a provision in the charter for amending it through Select Board vote.
Interesting.
So, I don't know if we would have to create a new position of Director of Planning, and then the person would just be hired for that, and Town Planner would sit vacant?
It's interesting, because Kristi brought this up, and so she seemed to feel that that the change in titles was something the Select Board was able to do. So, perhaps we'll have to check with her and see what actually the...
Yeah, I don't really have a problem with changing the title. I think it's a more distinguished title, and...
I have no problem changing it. I'm just, is that going to create problems and a little embarrassment for the Planning Board if we vote for something that we don't have the authority to do? I don't think, I don't think we're voting.
You're making a recommendation.
Going to vote on a recommendation, right?
Yeah. We're recommending they change the title, and they would have to explore the legal means to do that.
Oh, so we're not, we're not voting that they do that?
No, it's the Select Board that makes the decision on changing titles.
Well, maybe the town, to be honest, but we're recommending that they change the title.
To change it, so then they're going to explore the process for that?
They're going to have to figure out the correct process to do that.
Well, good, then. That's fine.
Any other questions? Do you have any comments?
Over the years, speaking with my colleagues, I think that more and more towns are going to the title. I could ask John what it's like in Hopkinton, but more and more towns are going to the title of Planning Director, depending on what the, the staff structure looks like. I think most of the communities in central Massachusetts use Planning Director. Some use Town Planner. I think Northboro still uses Town Planner, but most of them use Planning Director. Also, recently, talking to a couple of my colleagues, they suggested that the change be made to recruit more people with more experience, because the job title connotes more responsibility.
Is the, is the intent to get more planning staff under this Director of Planning?
I think eventually, I think if all the, or at least, all the comments I've heard over the years I've been on the Planning Board is that we obviously need an assistant planner. The question is, you know, how we can move forward on this, and recommend to the Board of Select that this should become a... I would hope that as late as next April, we could be able to, in the Springtown meeting, that we would be able to get an assistant town planner.
I think, I think the intent is to hire a new Town Planner and get their input on the needs of the department before we make any decisions, but I agree with Hazel that it's likely that... I go into other towns and that are probably smaller than Westboro. In fact, definitely smaller than Westboro, and they have a more substantial planning staff, so...
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's probably related to Jim's experience.
No, I would support more planning staff in town, so I'd hope that this would give a...
I don't want to put the cart before the horse. We've got to get a new planner.
But I mean, Director of Planning kind of connotates that there's going to be people under that director. They're not just directing themselves, right?
Absolutely.
Any other questions? You want to motion this?
I move that we recommend to the Town Select Board the changing of the title of Town Planner to Director of Planning.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Five to zero. Jim, can you draft a letter from the board, and I'll sign it? Kristi, and to the Select Board. What else do we have? I don't have... Does anybody have any reports of board members who attend other committee meetings?
No, but I did want to raise, I think you'll find in your packets, the slide presentation that was done last night on the open meeting and public records law overview, which probably worth, well, for everybody to just take a look at. The meeting was, yeah, fairly well-attended last night, and Kristin was there. But I think it's always a good thing to keep in mind, so... I had Kristin copy, or pick-up copies of the slide presentation, which is what the talk was based on, so everybody's got it in their folder.
Thanks.
And just for the board's information, every year, the Attorney General's Office holds numerous regional sessions for people that can't attend evening meetings but would prefer to attend during the day. In the past, I've gone to them on the open meeting law, and it's a really good session because you get the two Assistant Attorney Generals leading the session, and you get a lot of town planners that go during the daytime. So, you might hear questions raised by those that actually have to implement the bylaw, because a lot of people, over the years, it takes time to learn the bylaw. If you go to one session, you're not going to necessarily get it all in one session. So, having the Attorney General there to answer questions is really good, because sometimes you don't know what question to ask, and someone will ask a question, and you go, "Yeah, that's what I mean. I need to know that." So, those sessions are generally in October and February, so I would just say, keep watching the planners' listserv. They'll be advertised.
I think that that's particularly important, because most of the questions that are going to come up are on opinions which the Attorney General's Office has given on various fact situations, and so the interpretation of the law is actually more important than kind of learning the law. It's how the Attorney General's Office interprets it.
Sure. And another thing that's valuable about these sessions is the Attorney General often gives methods for curing when the open meeting law has been violated and contested. So, for example, you have a town meeting requirement to advertise a zoning bylaw, and you didn't notice the public town, the surrounding communities, which is quite often an oversight. We get very concerned about what's going on locally, but we often forget our surrounding communities, or maybe the Office of Community Planning and Development at the state. So, the cure for that is to simply send the article to the surrounding towns and give them two weeks to respond. Tell them that, that you've had this flaw, and the Attorney General will allow them to respond. And if that, if I hadn't been at a session and heard that, I would not have known what to do, because we've been in that situation before my tenure here. And because of that method, we've had bylaws that didn't, that weren't turned down by the Attorney General because of an advertising flaw, and I would not have known that, because it's not provided in the statute. But that is a cure that the AG allows. So, if you didn't know to ask the question, or if you didn't run into that problem, and you weren't at one of these listening sessions, you might not have known that. So, I would encourage going to these meetings. There's also a session led annually by the Citizen Planners Training Collaborative that talks about the open meeting law, and that session is generally led by two to three planners who've had experience with violations of the law. So, that's also an opportunity to attend this.
Master Plan, anything else on that? Because I do have a quick update on the Master Plan Committee.
I think we have one set of minutes.
Okay, you want to do that first?
Yeah, we can do that. Yeah, we can do that first, or two sets, sorry. This is the day... Oops, sorry. The dates of May 2 and April 25. Does everyone have a chance to review those minutes? Are there any questions or changes? Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 25 and May 2?
So moved.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you, Kristin.
Okay, so the Master Plan Implementation Committee met last week. We had Ellen Google from the Active Transportation Safety Committee in... Is that the right title? I think that's the right title of that committee.
Yes, Active Transportation.
Hope I didn't screw it up, Ellen. And we talked quite a bit about the B-Walt and some potential routes in town. We talked about the Otis Street Mass Works project, which I think you're all familiar with. A little bit about the Fisher Street Bridge overpass that's going over the train. And then we also got an update on the vulnerable road users by state law that requires, I believe it's four feet between a motorist and pedestrian or bike when passing. So that there'll be most likely signs posted around town highlighting that. And one of the moves that the ATSC is looking at is trying to get the town speed limit changed to 25 miles an hour. All right, anything else we need to... I know we have downtown plan discussion. There's really no update on that. We do have an application going into the state. One Stop, Community One Stop for Growth, which is a clearinghouse for grant applications. That'll be going in in June. If anybody's interested in reviewing that application, I can get you a copy, but I want to thank Central... CMRPC is helping us with that, and the Town Manager and Community Development Director have worked pretty hard on that. So I'm excited. Hopefully, we'll get some money for a downtown plan. And then the housing zoning bylaws in the Highway Business District. I've asked Jim to take that up with the Zoning Review Committee to come up with a potential draft for us to consider by August, if we want to get it on the Fall Town Meeting. Any suggestions on that? Get it to Jim or John, or our other rep on that committee, so... Any questions? I don't see any other business on the agenda. Is there anything else, Jim?
Nothing further at this time. I'd just say I'm interested in receiving information about the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I think it's exciting that they are interviewing all the critical committees and departments that will be implementing the plan. So I know it's a long process, and that many people on the committee are itchy to get going and accomplish something, and I agree with that. But I think it's important that they understand what divisions and departments will be the ones they'll be working with. And I think it also helps those departments feel more comfortable with the plan, as opposed to expecting that they're going to receive tasks that they're unfamiliar with. So this gives a back-and-forth opportunity for the departments and the committee to work together.
I think it's been great, because I've actually learned things in those meetings that I didn't know about, like the Fisher Street Safe Streets Grant and some of the other W. Projects and everything else in town that I really wasn't aware of, and I consider myself pretty tuned in to what's going on. So it was kind of exciting, and I think it's important for the committee to understand what the town is working on before we ask them to work on something else.
Right. If you were to prioritize a goal that had already been completed or was already tried before, I think there's lessons learned. The staff can impart their experience on a particular project that could help redirect the mission, or not the mission, but the goals and the objectives of the Implementation Committee. So I think it's really good. The other thing is, staff just doesn't have time to update, say, the Board of Selectmen or the Planning Board on a regular basis. So this is an opportunity for the group that's making the direction of the town in the future to ask questions, and an opportunity to meet the people that actually do the work. So I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. That reminds me, though. I wanted to ask the ATSC, and we ran out of time the other night. One of the master plan goals was the scenic roads bylaw. Are you still meeting with them?
You mean with the ATSC?
Yeah. I'd be curious. I think they might have a better idea of which roads would be applicable.
I can reach out to them, sure. They meet on a day that I'm not working now.
I don't think we can really move that forward till we get the new planner in place.
The scenic road bylaw?
Where you're on half the schedule, I don't see how you have time to do that.
So at one point, there was an effort to develop a scenic road bylaw, and there were streets that were identified, and that was early on when I came here. It was probably 20 years ago. But I know there's a list of roads at the DPW, because it was the Department of Public Works that oversaw it.
Well, again, where you're on a half-time schedule, I don't see how we could move that forward for this fall.
Well, I could ask them to just simply meet with you. Maybe they could come to a Planning Board meeting, and you could talk about it. I could get you the list from the DPW.
Yeah, I'd be interested in that, with the rest of the board.
I know Ruggles Street was on it. I'd have to think about the other streets.
Well, Mount Pleasant, probably.
Yeah, probably Mount Pleasant was on it. I don't remember.
Bowman. Well, I could name a few, but... All right, well, that... Yeah, I would be interested in pursuing that, but I don't want to overload you, where we've only got you for another month.
Well, I can make a simple phone call.
Perfect. All right. Any other business? Hearing none. I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? That's five to zero. Great.